If the board is prepared, the time is now 6:00 on Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. That is the day and time scheduled for the regular meeting of the Westland Planning Commission for July. If the board is prepared, please join us, rise and for the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his vocal with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. May I please have a roll call?
Durante.
Present.
Folks.
Present.
Hobbs.
Present.
Hopkins.
There.
Richards.
Present.
Rounds.
Present.
Statchow.
Present.
Reed.
Present.
And Rappaport.
Present.
Have a full one.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Recognizing Daryl Rounds, second.
Support.
Recognizing the Anna Statchow. Roll call, please.
Roll call to approve the June 4 meeting minutes. Durante is absent, excused. Folks.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Statchow.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Rappaport.
Yes.
The minister approved.
Our next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the point on our agenda when citizens may come up and add items to the agenda that are not already present on the agenda. There will be an opportunity to speak on agenda items. If you do not have an agenda, they can be acquired at the lectern in front of the podium in front of me. There should be a stack of them there. I see a nod over there, so yeah, somebody definitely, somebody very responsible obviously took care of it. Anybody on my right wish to speak? Anybody on my left wish to speak? Seeing none, we are going to move on to our action items for today. Now calling case number 1052A, a proposed site plan and special land use approval for a drive-through coffee shop at 35966 Ford Road. Administration, can you please tell us a little bit about this proposal?
Thank you, Chairman. Petitioner tonight is seeking site plan and special land use approval to build a 664-square-foot scooters drive-through-only coffee shop. Business hours are Monday through Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. This redevelopment project will result in the demolition of the existing commercial building and resulting in the construction of that building I just mentioned. The property is currently ZONE CB3. That's our general commercial business district. It's also located in the Ford Road overlay district. Drive-through facilities are permitted in the Ford Road overlay district subject to special land use approval. The site will be accessed by two full-service driveways at North Berry Street. The site complies with the parking and stacking requirement for a drive-through restaurant. The site plan was accompanied by a traffic impact study prepared by a certified traffic engineer via the petitioner. The study examined potential traffic impact of the proposed drive-through on the adjacent roadways and also internally within the site. The study found no issues on internal operations and stacking. As mentioned, they're complying with both the parking and the stacking. Circulation looks good as well internally. The study did find some, what we feel at the local level, significant impacts on traffic operations on North Berry Street and Ford Road due to the new driveways that are being installed on North Berry Street. Landscape screening is provided throughout the site and along Ford Road and also North Berry Street in accordance with zoning ordinance requirements. The development plan proposes a six-foot-tall wooden privacy fence to screen the site instead of the required six-foot-tall masonry screening wall. The planning commission has the authority to approve alternate screening requirements, and so if you do decide to approve this modification, just noted on the record for the notes, for the file. Adjacent land uses in zoning, property to the north is ZONE R2, single-family residential, developed by a single-family dwelling. Property to the south is CB1, low-intensity commercial business. It is vacant. I believe we just approved a retail plaza on that site a couple months ago. Properties to the east, ZONE CB1, low-intensity commercial business as well and developed by a commercial building that is currently vacant. And property to the east, CB1 as well and developed by a residential dwelling that is currently being rented out. The future land use designation for this site is city center. We have an elevation drawing. The proposed building will be constructed using a variety of building materials. Proposed materials include stone, concrete block, and vinyl siding. They did provide an elevation drawing, but it is missing in this presentation. It isn't your backup, and I can pull it up if we need to after this presentation. The proposed building height is 19 feet. The required minimum in the Ford Road overlay district is 24 feet, so a variance is required for this. Proposed lot coverage is 0.5%. There's no maximum, so they're in compliance there. The proposed front setback on Ford Road is 34.3 feet. The required maximum is 10 feet, so there's a variance being required there to proceed as proposed. The setback on North Berry Street, the side yard setback, and the rear yard setback are all in compliance. Before I read my recommendation, I would like to state on the record that internally the administration, not only myself, but the administration as a whole, including myself and the city's engineering department, well, rather, division through OHM, had some concerns about the curb cuts being placed on North Berry Street. This is not new to the developer. There's an existing curb cut on Ford Road which the city believes could be repurposed at a minimum. That is being removed, closed, and so North Berry's being used as the primary exit and entrance to the site with those two curb cuts. Me personally, I think this is burdensome for our residents in North Berry Street itself, at which point I engaged with the developer, and he had alerted me that he has had conversations with MDOT that resulted in them basically saying no to any curb cuts on Ford Road. I engaged with this individual at MDOT at the local Taylor TSC level, and he also emailed me something similar as well, stating that we do not or would not approve of any curb cuts on Ford Road. Two curb cuts for this business, high-traffic potentially business, a drive-through business on North Berry Street, a residential street, I feel like deserves more investigation from the city's standpoint with MDOT, at least, A, another meeting face-to-face with MDOT representatives, perhaps maybe others at the metro level, which is higher up than the local TSC. Or at minimum, I feel like MDOT should be able to provide us a memo addressed to the city council or the planning commission, which was asked and which was not provided. So before action is taken, one way or the other, with a denial or approval, I would like the city to exhaust conversations with MDOT and either get a yes, a no, or preferably, here's what we can do to work together on having scooters here by presenting maybe different alternative options, which I don't know if were investigated with a curb cut maybe on Ford Road and a curb cut on North Berry or some type of different circulation like that. That is my proposal to the planning commission in addition to the two recommendations laid out in my staff report, one of which recommends a denial and one of which recommends an approval contingent upon the dimensional variances that are required. Additionally, I would like the planning commission to consider the requirement of constructing a masonry screening wall as opposed to a wooden privacy fence. I do feel like a drive-through operation warrants a masonry screening fence specifically when it's located adjacent to a residential, an existing residential, single-family dwelling. That's all I have for you tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
The chair is interested in clarification. The request would be from the administration to consider the possibility of a table of this matter so that additional research can be done?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted that clarified. At this time, is the petitioner in the audience? Please rise to the podium, be recognized.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Did you have anything that you'd like to add to the presentation of the administration? I personally, and I'm sure the rest of the board, is very interested to hear. Normally, normally when proposals come before us, the administration recommends approval, and you've heard that the current recommendation from the administration is either for caution or for a denial of your proposal. So please, please clarify why you believe we should move forward as well as addressing any additional things that we need to know about your proposal.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate everybody's time. Just Mo, thank you, you know, as well. A lot of the conversation that, you know, you just stated, we had, you know, so we did involve, get MDOT involved and had conversations around the, you know, the entrance, and, you know, we can go ahead and still work with, you know, them to see if there's any other opportunities. Just what we're looking to do is create a family business, and, you know, you're guys in the city of Westland, and we're looking to get the community involved, you know, as much as we can. So I'd like to present John, my partner. He'd be able to, you know, answer, ask, answer some questions that you guys have.
Good evening, members of the commission. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is John Pentchorn. I'm a civil engineer with StanTech. I've been involved throughout the project from first concept, conversations with MDOT to where we stand today. And Mo, thank you for the presentation. I do believe you put it very fairly, and thank you for that. So I do have a small presentation prepared, if we would like to see it. It covers many of the same things that he just discussed. I'm also just happy to take questions.
All right. If you wanted to move forward with your presentation, that, this is the appropriate time to do that. The normal process, just to let you know, so that you, so that you know to either take your seat or move forward with your presentation, this is a, this is a, this is a, sorry, is a public hearing, so we're going to ask you to take a quick seat, ask for the, for the citizens to air their concerns, if anybody has any. Then we'll bring you back up, and that's when the board will actually put questions to you. So if you wanted to move forward with a presentation prior to that, that's fine.
I will go ahead and do that.
Thank you.
Definitely not be in my house.
There we go.
Okay. All right, so you've, you've heard who we are and what we're here to do. I did have just a couple slides here on the existing site, which Mo included in his report. This is a former tree trimming business. The building has been vacant a couple years. I have an overhead view here, and on the next, just another street view, which you've already seen. Just to kind of walk you around the site plan briefly, so we are proposing a 664-square-foot coffee kiosk. It is drive-through service only, meaning there is no indoor seating, and there is no walk-up window. We provide 10 spaces for queuing for vehicles to stack on site and wait for their order to be provided. There is a trash enclosure in the back northeast corner of the site. Per city request, we are providing sidewalk improvements along both Ford Road and North Berry Street, and you can see the two crosswalks across the driveways along the, two driveways on Berry Street there. And as Mo noted, the variance for the front yard setback, which is because of the, because the site is within the Ford Road overlay district and is subject to a maximum setback. In the landscape drawing, there are a handful of existing overstory trees on the site today. They are somewhat on the project site, and some of them are just across property lines, you know how it goes. We're proposing keeping approximately half of them and then filling in the gaps, as you can see, especially along Ford Road. Here are the elevations, so these two views would be what the building looks like. The top one would be if you're driving past on Berry Street, that's kind of the end cap facing you there, and the bottom one is the building profile as you would see it from Ford Road. You can see that the colors kind of fit Scooter's branding. They're, I think, pretty sharp. I think it's a very good-looking, good-looking product. I do have a couple slides here on traffic, if it's all right to dig into that. So we did perform a traffic study. That traffic study focused on the intersection of Ford Road and North Berry Street. This somewhat confusing graphic shows all the different turning movements in, there's three numbers stacked side by side. I recognize you can't quite see it from where you sit, but it provides the 2025 kind of existing condition study, if you will. It's the 2026 projected traffic with a 1% background growth, and then the 2026 full build-out, so it's that background growth with the Scooter's coffee traffic added on. There's a few key, a few key takeaways that I have from this figure. Number one is that in the AM and PM peak hours, peak hour meaning the busiest time of the day according to the traffic counts of this intersection, you have 14 vehicles currently traveling south on Berry Street looking to go straight, turn right, or turn left at Ford Road. In the PM, that is six vehicles. Your existing eastbound traffic on Ford ranges from about 900 vehicles in the morning to about 1350, 1362 is what we counted in the afternoon. And then westbound, in the morning, you have a little over 1,100 and a little over 1,300 in the peak hour. I think the point is that Ford Road is much busier than Berry Street, something all of you already knew. The proposed southbound traffic from Berry Street to Ford Road in the peak hour again increases by 18 to 32 vehicles, and then in the PM increases by 13 to 19 vehicles. This table here discusses a concept called level of service. Level of service is a letter grade that essentially establishes how long you've sat there waiting to do something. Your existing condition, level of service, traveling south on Berry Street to Ford Road is highlighted in the top table there. So in the AM peak hour, it's a level of service C with vehicles sitting there a little more than 17 seconds. And then in the PM peak hour, it's a level of service E with vehicles sitting there a little bit more than 36 seconds. The bottom table is our proposed condition upon full site build-out. You can see that the traffic study model indicates an increase of approximately 30 seconds in the AM from about 17.7 to 47, which is a level of service E. And then in the PM, we are modeling a level of service F with an increase of approximately 40 seconds. So again, those apply to 30 seconds to about 14 trips in the AM peak hour and 40 to about six trips in the PM peak hour. So in summary, we're excited to be here. We think this is a great project. We think this really fits well in the community, and it does something really positive with a parcel that doesn't have currently a lot of attention. We acknowledge that there is an increase in traffic from this project. We feel it's relatively muted. We're looking at about 18 trips in the morning, 13 trips in the afternoon for the peak hour analysis. And add it all up, and you're looking at about 11 minutes total of extended wait time during the peak hours across 20 existing vehicles. We acknowledge that's not a time anybody wants to spend sitting at the stop sign waiting to turn. We hope that they're holding a coffee doing it. We think that the benefit to this project really outweighs some of the negatives here with the traffic. And that's the presentation we have for you today. Thank you for your time. We'll proceed and take questions when ready.
Thank you very much. We very much appreciate it, and before we go any further, I just want to let the petitioners know that it's been expressed to me that the, that the city's very grateful for your interest. We're just concerned, obviously, they're just concerned about, about the impact to the citizens. So with that in mind, thank you very much for your time. If you could please have a seat, and we're going to hear from the, from the citizens.
Thank you all.
So this is a special land use, therefore a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to hear any, any comments from the, from the audience. Is there anybody on my right wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none. Is there anybody on my left wishing to speak on this proposal? Gentlemen in the, the purple plaid. Oh, nope, the, the guy in the black shirt. Please go and be recognized.
Scooters, I mean, everybody loves scooters, if you've been there, but.
Sir, could you please give us your name?
My name's Bobby Johnson. I live on Berry Street.
Hi, Mr. Johnson.
I think this is a great project, but not for this site. Love to have almost anything come in here, not this project. There is, there's too much traffic on Ford Road. A lot of times, we can't get out on Ford Road, so we have to turn around and go, and get out a different way, and getting on Ford Road is, or getting onto Berry Street is another headache sometimes, too. I think the in and out onto Berry Street is a terrible idea. Certainly don't want that traffic on our street. The, I'm concerned also with the drainage, how is that going to affect our homes? That, there is a, that area is, was built on swamp land, and it's a lot of, lot of basement people had, has had problems. Also, the, a wooden fence, I've got a wooden fence in my backyard and two sides, and it's not a good, it's not a good thing. So love to have something there, just not this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Just one moment. Mr. Director, you did something to my, to my control screen. If I could please pause to make sure that we have the, the board with their, with their mics active. I would touch it, but I'd destroy it. Thank you. Oh, look at that, everything's red now. I do apologize for the delay, everybody. Okay, we appear to have technology on our side again. If there's anybody additionally on my right, anybody additionally on my left, the gentleman in the, the purple plaid, please rise to the podium, be recognized.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's John Schaefer. I'm also a resident of North Berry Street. Spent a lot of time in small business years ago, but the entrance and exit onto a residential street, when people are going to be coming through with their morning coffee, ready to go to work, are you going to turn left to stand in line to wait to get out onto Ford Road to go eastbound? Are you going to find a better way to get there by cutting through the neighborhood? There are a lot of children in that area, and I don't see this being a good process for anybody. We have three small grandchildren from the age of four to two right now, and it's going to change them playing out in our front yard, I guarantee you. I know Mr. Johnson's a neighbor across the street. He's got some younger children, too. I'm sure it's going to cut down on his children playing in the neighborhood. As a longtime resident of the greater area, born and raised in Warren Dale, lived in Canton for a while, lived in Houston, Texas for a few years, too. That was besides the point, and now we're in Westland. Looking at the design of this proposed project, I am hard-pressed to think of any businesses in the area that enter and exit off a side residential street like this, especially something that's going to be high-volume drive-through. I don't think it's going to be a good fit for the people who live in this little, small area of Westland, a place where we don't have streetlights, a place where we don't have curbs, and we have no problem with it. But if you start pushing a whole bunch of more cars up and down the street, it's going to be tough. Trying to exit onto Ford Road during the wintertime, where the snow's been pushed up and people are fighting to get in and out because the street's not clear, and now we're going to add people coming in and out, it's going to turn into a three-ring circus, folks. And I have no problems with business, and I love my coffee, don't get me wrong, but just this design, I don't think will fit. But that's my opinion, folks. I hope you think about it, at least, and I wish you gentlemen the best of, best of luck. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Continuing, anybody additionally on my right? Anybody additionally on my left? The gentleman in the green, please, rise to the podium, be recognized.
My name is Michael Seigwin. I'm also a resident of Berry Street. I've been there going on 50 years, and as much as I would love something built on that corner, that is the absolute worst corner in the whole city of Westland facing Ford Road. Half the buildings are abandoned, half of them were wood-cutting place before he went out of business, and it was rat-infested, and if you could put that first picture up of the frontage as far as having a wood fence, well, that's what we got now, and that's what it looks like. It's fallen down, there's weeds in there, it's a terrible-looking situation for the city to be facing Ford Road. And they also already have two egresses on Ford Road that already should be grandfathered in. To be moving them, closing them off, and putting them onto a side street, I think is absolutely preposterous. Like you say, in the wintertime or even regular business hours, if people are going to be lining up on Ford Road to turn into the coffee shop, how are we supposed to get on our street to turn right? I mean, I'm sure there'll be busier times and slower times, but it's going to be a crapshoot. So I don't think anything built on that whole section from Walton to Berry would be beautiful. I would appreciate anything because they're abandoned, and they need to be knocked down. Why the city hasn't done something about it, I don't understand, but as far as all the traffic coming on a residential street when Ford Road is already there is, to me, ridiculous. And I thank you for your time, and I hope something comes in that we can agree on, and good luck with your proposal, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody additionally on my right? Anybody additionally on my left? The nice lady in the blue? Please rise to the podium, be recognized.
I'm Irene Seigwin. Been on Berry Street for over 40 years, and that corner has been. Been on Berry Street for over forty years, and that corner has been a monstrous eyesore. And I'd love to see something come in there. And I agree with everybody that traffic egressing and entering on Berry Street is ridiculous. There is an egress, an entrance right on Ford Road, there's another one on the other end near Walton. Why can't we just go out on Walton? Why can't we put the opening, go through Berry Street, come out on Walton, or vice versa? Why can't we, I mean, maybe you own that property, but that property is empty, too, and it needs to be developed as well.
Ma'am, please address all commentary to the board.
From one end to the other, and I have commented to this to different people in the city, that is the ugliest piece of property in the whole Ford Road corridor. It is. And it's a shame. I've looked at it for forty years. It'd be nice to have something come in there, but not that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We're almost out of citizens. Anybody additionally on my right? And would the nice lady in the pink like to comment? Seeing as we appear to be out of citizens to participate, I'm going to invite the petitioner back up to the podium. And we are going to turn it over to the commission. Commissioners, actually, let me give you a moment. Did you want to comment on any of the things that you heard from the citizens at this time?
I didn't want to comment on it, just appreciate all the feedback. And, you know, those are obviously, you know, what we...
That is exactly what this forum is primarily for, is so that you have an opportunity to hear the concerns from the citizens that you're going to be neighbors with. That being said, anybody on my right recognizing Sam Durante?
Wouldn't you consider any other site besides that one? Because there's a lot better sites that are available throughout the city. You know, there's an old Taco Bell on Wayne Road, that Nakey Deal Coffee Shop. It's been closed. It's right next to the post office. And there's many sites throughout the city that could be refurbished that would be, fit your needs. Wouldn't you consider another site?
When it came to choosing a site, that's something that we spent a lot of time on. And the whole idea behind that was identifying a place in the city, not only that would fit our needs, but one that we could also, you know, help make, you know, take an eyesore from the city and make it, you know, a beautiful place. So there were kind of two-pronged approach to that, and this was the site that was available, fit what we were looking for, and also, you know, was an opportunity to make something beautiful within the city. So that's approach that we're taking currently.
So you wouldn't consider a different site?
We could if that's, if this site is not available for us to use.
Okay. I just...
Thank you very much, Sam. Anybody additionally on my left recognizing David Swobos? Reed?
Good evening. I've been in the city about fifty-seven years. And actually, my grandmother used to own the house at the corner of Walton and Ford Road. Many moons ago, my mother grew up in that house as a young girl. So I'm real familiar with the neighborhood. And having been involved in this city for a long time, when I look to approve something or consider something, I look, does it change the essential character of the neighborhood for the positive? If I'm looking at this, I love the idea of a scooters because I've, you know, I frequented the one in Plymouth at Annaba Road and Sheldon. But I'm really concerned that you want to close off where you've got some, already some cuts there. The, thinking about the wooden fence, I would ask you through the chair to the petitioner, if this was in your neighborhood, how would you feel about people coming onto your road? Because I can tell you, they're just, Ford Road is monstrous anywhere, but in that area, it's pretty tough. I mean, especially even now, like, you know, we have a lot of construction going on just in the north end of the city. So people are going everywhere and coming around, and the traffic's picking up. And, you know, that's the heartbeat of our city center, you know, with the library and all of the things there. But when you look at that situation, did you have any conversations with the neighbors? Talk to the neighbors and say, hey, what do you think about this? Because, you know, one thing I would always say to a developer, yes, you can build what you can, you know, whatever on your property within the law, but you want to be a good neighbor first and foremost. And I can tell you, in my fifty-seven years in this city, rarely do you ever see a recommendation for a denial from the administration. Rarely. I mean, I probably could count on one hand. And looking at that, I mean, Commissioner Durante asked you about, you know, considering other things. I think the residents have kind of said to you, they don't really want it. I mean, I would say that that's probably what I'm getting from them. They want to see something, but that traffic really would be tough. That would really be tough. And like, how did you determine that that site was the most advantageous, considering you needed to get variances, you had, you know, heavy, extra-heavy traffic? You know, that's a lot to kind of overcome when you're going into an area over there. I mean, have you looked around? Because I can tell you, I know that between our director of planning and building and then our economic development folks, there are plenty of properties, like Commissioner Durante said, and I'm sure that they would help you find something that would be even more better fitting for you and for your proposal. I mean, we want you in Westland, but we also have to weigh the pros and cons for the neighbors, you know? I know Mr. Johnson probably at least thirty-five, forty years, and he's been active in the city, and, you know, he's always been very positive about things coming to the city. But for a resident to come and say, you know, I'm concerned about that, that speaks a lot to me. So I would say, I mean, from my standpoint, I couldn't support something that kind of changes the essential character of the neighborhood in the adverse, because, you know, the citizens pay the bills in this city, they pay the taxes, and I need to err on the caution of what the citizens... So I would say there are other, you know, like I said, there'll be other questions from other commissioners, but for me, just looking at the traffic going onto a residential street, I would not want the traffic. I mean, I live on Joy Road in the north end, and I am seeing so much traffic now because of the construction between the bridge on Wayne Road and the one on Plymouth Road. Every day, I can't sit on my deck in the morning and watch anything but semis and all of this stuff back up. And even to come here to this meeting, I have to wait sometimes twenty minutes just to get out of my driveway. I can't imagine people, you know, going through that on Ford Road, considering it's, what, four or six lanes? I don't remember. I never got up to four. And when I'm on a two-lane road, that's also a county road. So I would just say, really take it to heart and think, you know, we don't want to deny things, but we want to do something that's a win-win for you and for the residents. So, you know, if you could, you know, give us a better commitment than, and I'll yield back my time to the rest of the commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Anybody additionally on my right recognizing, I'm sorry, so sorry, recognizing Mr. Hopkins?
Good evening. Thank you for bringing this to Westland. I would be excited to see you guys be here. I'm very thankful that you're considering Westland. I do have to throw this at you. I really agree with the residents that they're going to cut through their neighborhood instead of making a left or a right out of Ford Road. You're asking for several variances to make this happen. You're asking that we also drop our screen wall and give you a simple wooden fence. So it kind of seems like you guys are asking for a lot. I would suggest exactly what everybody's suggesting, and table this until you can talk to MDOT and see if there's a better resolution, because Berry is not it. It's just not. I would not want this next to my house. Now, as I'm looking at the street view, I see a curb cut already. What's the problem, then?
Like I said, I had one email exchange with a gentleman at the local TSC office and a very brief phone conversation, so...
There's a lot of gray area, then.
Yeah, and I've worked at that TSC, so not sure what's going on, but I would like some additional dialogue there.
Just, you know, we're a body that really wants to make sure that the citizens are very happy with their neighbors. That's kind of our job, and to try to make these things come together. By all means, we want you to be here, but you're asking a lot of us. Just, I need this variance, I need this variance, I need a height variance, I need a parking lot variance, I need a lot. I would suggest that we table and see what we can come up with. That's my opinion. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hopkins. Anybody additionally on my left recognizing, my God, I'm so bad with names today, recognizing Jessica Hobbs?
I had a question for the administration. Is the question for MDOT whether or not they could use the existing curb cuts, or whether or not alterations could be made to the existing curb cut?
The only conversation I've had with MDOT was, is can we move forward with the plan that they proposed, which I think originally was two curb cuts off Ford Road? And that was a no, maybe a vague no, and that was it. There were no other alternatives explored or options discussed, at least not with me directly.
Okay. So there, is there alteration? I guess the site plan at hand has nothing to do with Ford Road curb cuts, but do curb cuts not get grandfathered in, per se?
These are some of the conversations I want to have with MDOT.
Okay, so that hasn't even been discussed?
Nope.
Okay. Then I would agree with Brian, that we should probably table and have those conversations.
Your role.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hobbs. Anybody additionally on my right recognizing Ruby Richards? Mr. Durante, after everybody's spoken, I'll re-recognize you, but please keep your commentary brief.
No problem. I just wanted to make a couple of comments because I wanted to address the traffic. The traffic is hectic. I go a couple of blocks down to that subway, and it was one time, if people don't stop to let you out, it's hectic. And I literally turned my car off and had to wait ten minutes before I can actually get out. So I can just imagine the traffic that's going to be on Berry. And it kind of hit me when that guy got up and said something about his kids play out there. You shouldn't take that from them. I'm thinking now about the little incident a couple of days ago, the little kid getting hit coming from, you know, that little carnival. And she just hit him and she left. I can imagine something like that happening on Berry, and I don't, I'm not for that. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody additionally on my left recognizing Deborah Fox?
I actually live in the area, and on a given, a good day, or a given day, Ford Road is crazy. And I do all I can to just avoid Ford Road most of the time. And I also think that it's not fair to the residents that live there to have this extra traffic coming through, and especially when you've got kids that play and all of that. So I think, I agree with some of my other commissioners, that you may need to look at a different location for this facility. And I am happy to see it. It is good to have a coffee shop in this area instead of your, you know, your others that you see, your Dunkin' Donuts, that kind of thing. So it's good to see a nice, homey-type coffee shop. So please listen to what we've said and try to find another area if you can, and we can always discuss this again when we come back.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Recognizing Deanna Stachow.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for considering Westland. Do appreciate it very much. I'm going to take a little spin on this. Actually, Ford Road is a good place to have your business. We have a lot of businesses on Ford Road. Yes, it is traffic, and by all means, that would be to your benefit, right? But, and the structure is really appealing, you know, that you have as well. I guess the biggest, and the fact is that maybe you have a three-minute turnaround as far as your delivery of coffee or whatever is concerned, or how many seconds it's going to take, which is great. And for people in the morning and in the evenings, whatever they need. So this is, this sounds like an ideal business. Ford Road is open. Just find a different location, something that's going to really benefit you. Ford Road traffic, great, you know? Everybody loves coffee, right? Or almost everybody. But just take into consideration our viewpoint and the residents here. It's going to make a difference for them, and we certainly do want you in Westland. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Rounds, would you like to speak?
I guess since everybody else has spoken, I'll say something. Good evening, Mr. Vella. So a question was asked of you as to why you all settled on that location. I don't think it was asked that particular way, but I'm asking it this way now. Why did you guys settle on that particular location?
So the reason that we sit on that location, from our perspective, it met all what we were looking for. You know, it met traffic counts. It was a place that would fit our building. It was in Westland, the city that we want to be in, and it was available, it was on a corner. Again, we spent probably eight, ten months looking at different locations, and that was the one that we figured would be great for us and also good for, like I said, an opportunity to take a, you know, dilapidated area and turn it into something beautiful.
Yeah, but yet, there's several variances that would be required in order for you all to do that. Out of all, out of the other areas that you all considered, was there any one of those that was like a close second? Because, because if I had to surmise, I think the reason why you want to be there is kind of what she said, that Ford Road traffic gets you a lot of visibility. But the impact to these people coming in and out of the franchise on a residential street, that's just, that's just too much for them to bear. And for that very reason, I mean, I can't support it. But to the point that my fellow commissioner made, like, and everybody else has pretty much said, that there has to be, there has to be another, there needs to be an alternative location, because that's just too much for them to bear. It's too much, in my humble opinion. So that's all I have.
Re-recognizing Sam Durante.
For the chair to administration, is there a reason why the curb cuts on Ford Road can't be used?
I don't know what the reason is. That's part of the discussion earlier about requesting additional time to engage with MDOT in a more detailed way.
Perhaps that question's good to the petitioner, if they're aware of a reason why the Ford Road curb cut can't be used?
Yeah, so the reason that it couldn't be used is we looked at that initially and reached out to MDOT, had a conversation with them, and they said that...
reached out to MDOT, had a conversation with them, and they said that they would not approve us to use it. That's where we changed, we went alternate route coming to Berry Street.
But they didn't give you a reason why?
Hi, everyone.
By all means, it sounds like an engineering question, yes?
Yeah, yeah.
We should maybe hear from an engineer.
I do want to, before I fully answer the question, I do want to just appreciate the process a little bit, just to lay it out for everybody. We did have an original site plan that utilized the two access point on Ford Road. We, our team and MDOT, had conversations. Mo was not a part of those conversations, and as we developed the project, I'll get into why, we switched the access points to Berry Road. We submitted that plan. Mo was very upfront and said, "I don't like this, can we go back to Ford Road?" And our indications from MDOT was essentially that they would not permit the site, they wouldn't permit the existing driveways. The handful of reasons that they pointed out were safety-related, and pointed back to a 2001 publication. It's called something along the lines of the Access Management Guidebook. Probably don't have that perfect, but it's a publication from MDOT that kind of just outlines their guidelines, not standards, guidelines for redevelopment along corridors such as Ford Road. So there were a handful of points raised in there. A primary one was the distance of frontage. So we may be glossed over this, but the total parcel acreage that we're looking at is .34 acres, a very small piece of land, not a lot can fit on this. If we're talking about, can we redevelop this corner, short of the whole block being redeveloped at once, which is currently, you know, not feasible, not something we're talking about? There are very limited options of what could actually fit in that footprint. And tied to that footprint is the distance of frontage along Ford Road. It's approximately 125 feet at the 45 mile an hour speed limit along Ford Road. It's not something that MDOT is willing to grant a curb cut for, per our discussions with MDOT. Again, Mo has not been part of those discussions, and has graciously tried to coordinate that ahead of this meeting, given our full application and our desire to be in front of you today.
Thank you very much. So, before I make any comments, I had a couple of things that I wanted to make sure that were brought up that got adequately addressed. To the administration, one of the citizens brought up an issue about the drainage. Could you please speak to that?
Yeah, my understanding is that this site will improve any drainage issues if they exist on the site. They are connecting to some catch basins, or at least installing one new one. Is that correct?
Yes, comments were provided by OHM. One of the comments was to install a catch basin to collect the site drainage. Our updated plan, which was recently submitted, shows two new catch basins and does collect the site drainage, and connects it via one pipe into the existing city storm sewer network.
Thank you very much. I understand that by statute, each new development that comes before us is required by statute to either manage their storm water, as in not to add or encumber any other neighboring properties, or they're required to retain it on their property. Is that correct?
Yeah, the way to getting to that requirement varies development by development, but yes, the standard still applies.
So normally, when I do comment, I try to keep it as neutral as possible. I need to put exclamation points on things that I've heard from other people. I feel, number one, I've been told, and I certainly believe it, "Your coffee is delicious. We definitely want it in Westland." Yum yum. So certainly, we want you to feel welcome here. Also, we very much appreciate your desire to take a parcel that even the citizens who are very concerned about their traffic access, they want something nice in that spot, because the spot right there that you want to beautify, and certainly your presentation, the scooters building, looks like it's going to be nice. Definitely much better than what's there. I mean, anything would be better than what's there. So I want to make sure that you get a sense that we're not telling you, I don't think anybody here is saying, "Don't be where you want to be." Certainly, if there's a way to avoid the deal breaker that is this traffic issue, certainly, I think that that's a question that's worth answering with a certainty rather than question marks, which is currently what we have. And the last thing that I really wanted to address, and maybe somebody can speak to this, you are requesting a wooden fence as opposed to our standard, traditional masonry fence. Is there a particular reason for that accommodation, or is it just a financial thing?
Yes, we are proposing the wooden fence. It is primarily a financial thing. I think we would be willing to reconsider. It does, you know, I think in the logic of a designer sitting in a room full of designs, it does match the character of wooden fences in the area, but we're certainly happy to follow code on this.
Thank you very much. I'm appreciative of that clarification. That having been said, I am satisfied that we are prepared for a motion if somebody's recognizing Mr. Reed for that motion.
I move that we take case number 1052A, proposed site plan and special land use approval for a drive-through coffee shop, 35966 Ford Road, north of Ford, between Berry and Walton, and table it until the August 2025 meeting, based upon the administration working with the petitioner to exhaust all conversations and options with MDOT, to take a look at other sites, to take care of other requirements and concerns that may not have been named on the record, including the masonry wall screening, and then we can revisit this at the next meeting in August.
Support.
That's Mr. Reed, and Ruby Richards with the second. Roll call, please.
Okay, this is a roll call vote to table item 1052A. Durante.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Stachow.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Rapport.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes unanimously. We are going to revisit this in the August session, gentlemen, and please understand, our desire is to give you an opportunity to have this discussion out with MDOT, with the administration, and potentially our city's attorney, so that we can definitely get you the best possible outcome for this petition. Is there anything that the administration would like to add before we move on?
No, thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Please see the administration for next steps. We'll look forward to seeing you again. That being said, we're going to move on to item two, which is the proposed rescheduling of the Wednesday, August 6, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, to Tuesday, August 12, alternatively, the Thursday, August 14 date. Administration, would you please let us know what's going on with this?
Yeah, we kind of already spoke about it, but do you want me to record that?
Not with detail necessarily.
I am coaching my kids' baseball games, and one particular way, really, is our last baseball practice, or whatever session you want to call it, at Madonna on August 6th. I'd like to...
A thing that you would certainly not want to miss.
It's her last one, she needs medals, so I'm supposed to give her a medal.
Is there any discussion from the board on my right? Mr. Rounds.
Well, number one, are you inviting concerned others to the game?
If too many of us show up, we're going to have to have the clerk there.
August 6, 5:00 PM, at Madonna on Newburgh in Livonia.
And then the second...
The more the merrier.
And then the second, I think, are you ready to entertain a motion?
I will be in just a moment. I want to make sure nobody has any comments. Anybody on my left? Mr. Reed.
If we're going to pick a date, I would hope we would pick the 12th. I have other plans on the 14th that are personal.
Noted.
Ms. Stachow.
I also would like the August 12th, and like yourself, I do have something else that is pressing on the 14th. Thank you.
Ms. Richards.
I say August 12th. I have nothing on the 14th, but I say August.
Thank you. Anybody additionally on my left?
I'll go with August 14th.
So we are going to take these in date order. So I am entertaining a motion at this time for the approval of rescheduling to the 12th.
I move that we move the August installment of our Planning Commission meeting to August 12th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
That's Rounds with the motion, and Durante with the second. All those in favor, please indicate so aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please indicate so nay. Chair is not in question, the ayes have it. Our next meeting shall be on Tuesday, August 12, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Thank you very much. Moving on to Commissioner's comments, starting over there with Mr. Durante.
All I want to say is, I hope you reconsider and you come back, and we can give you approval, because we'd love to see you here in the city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rounds.
I'm just thankful and blessed to serve in this capacity, and to the petitioners, I just say that you work to exhaust all options so that we can come up with the best outcome for everyone.
Ms. Stachow.
Just saying, thank you for considering Westland, and we would love to have your business here, and the good coffee. So, at that rate, I'll pass.
Mr. Hopkins.
I hope that we can come to a resolution, and you'll be here with us, and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you very much. Ms. Richards.
I have nothing, I just want to say happy Fourth of July to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Ms. Hobbs.
I echo the sentiments of my colleagues when it comes to finding solutions. We love having smaller businesses, new businesses here in Westland, businesses that are resident-facing and make Westland a better place to commute on Ford Road and get home and get to work every day. But we also really care about it being a great place to live, and so we don't want to compromise either of those things. And happy Fourth of July to everyone.
Mr. Reed.
Oh, boy. So first, I want to remind all of our citizens, we won't be here in time for the, the city election is on Tuesday, August 5. Make sure you exercise your right to vote. Want to say thank you to Commissioner Richards and Nicole, our assistants, for their volunteer and their efforts to work the city elections. Also, I want to say to the residents, you still have options to deal with the blight and the situation with that property. You know, we have the ClickIt app for the city, and you can take pictures and send it through, and remember, we did start a new budget today, so there are additional ordinance officers, and I would say to you, avail yourself of that process, that way you put it on the record, and, you know, remember, this is an election year. You have a lot of people running for various things. This is the time to let your voice be heard about everything and anything in your area. I mean, I did that maybe six or seven years ago on Joy Road. We hadn't had our road redone since the early 80s, and I did that with a new council person, and they were able to work with the county, and they redid Joy Road. Now, we're probably going to have to do it again with all these heavy trucks, but avail yourself of that process, and especially with this administration, they're very in tune to what the residents have, and I would just encourage you to do that. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for their comments, and, you know, everybody, we're working together, we're a good team, and just want to say, I think that haircut's kind of cool with our chairman, it's, you know, I don't know, I don't know if I'll go that short, but I think it's pretty cool.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fox.
Yes, thank you for coming, and I agree with my fellow commissioners, don't give up on Westland. If we can somehow make it on Ford Road, we'll be happy with that, but if not, there are plenty of other vacant places that can be used in the city. Just don't forget about us.
Thank you very much. Anything from the administration?
I just want to point out that I did notice your humor on the vote to have a later planning commission date in August, so I appreciated that, and I don't think anyone has complained. That's it.
Anything from our executive facilitation professional?
I, oh, doesn't work. I too like David's haircut. Looks great.
Why is this meeting suddenly about my haircut?
We could all maybe take a moment tomorrow morning to keep Ken and our thoughts and prayers, he is coming in for a procedure.
Indeed, from the Chair, yeah. Our thoughts and prayers are with Ken Sharp, our former chairperson, a man who I learned everything I know about running a meeting from, and he's a special guy. I hope he's well-cared-for, and otherwise in the hands of his maker. That being said, did I see that the mayor recently had a birthday?
Yes, he did, yes.
Well, happy birthday to the mayor, on the record. Also, to everybody, please have a safe and happy Fourth of July. I also appreciate my fellow commissioners. We do have an excellent team, and we do definitely come to some pretty decent decisions, hopefully, that are acceptable to our citizens, which we are happy, very happy that you guys came in to air your concerns. It helps us to understand, very occasionally, almost every time that we have a business come in for approval, somebody speaks to the concern about traffic. And this situation is much more prescient than it has been in the past. This is an existing traffic situation that could potentially be made much worse if we don't get the right solution here. So I'm glad that we have some consensus that we are going to move forward and try to get a better answer if one's available to us. That said, thank you so much for your interest in Westland. We do appreciate you, we want you here, and hopefully, we can make this happen. So, I have faith. Would that be a motion to adjourn?
Yes, would be a motion to adjourn.
I recognize Commissioner Durante for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved. It is moved and seconded by, I'm sorry, it is moved by Durante, seconded by Darrell Rounds. All those in favor, please indicate so aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate so nay.
Nay.
The Chair is not in question, we are adjourned.